Had seemed to get lost in the multi-translations that we were sending around and so we needed to get those clarified. That's item number two, which initially quarterly meetings between the liaison neighborhoods must be conducted to ensure clarity of policy and to address any concerns. At an appropriate time, upon mutual agreement, those regular meetings will move to semi-annual and the foregoing parties may call special meetings at any time. The liaison will maintain records of the meetings and communications in which, in conjunction with the presidents of historic Heathwood and the Melrose Neighborhood Associations. And then the other item is under the scheduling events. Application limits events to middle schools, junior varsity, but eliminates varsity football. The Heathwood and Melrose Neighborhoods have sought to limit events to junior varsity. Varsity lacrosse was accepted under the limited circumstance, though, that may involve economic efficiencies due to anticipated low crowd or scheduling conflicts to the use of memorial stating by the district schools varsity soccer will matches would be allowed at the MPV. And all of the other items were included. As on the landscape, the school district is making strides to create more of a buffer and recapture. There's going to be a lot of trees that will be having to be shifted or possibly destroyed and the school district's made a commitment to take those trees. At this point, the number is not defined, which we're working on, to help enclose the buffer throughout the adjacent neighborhoods and capture those and be identified. Also, the school district has agreed to replace the crepe myrtles with more evergreens to help stack and create more noise reduction and visibility in so we have a create a better buffer. Mr. Quackenbush and his team will make sure that Ms. Hampton gets that as it's revised as we've discussed. With that, request that we move forward.
Is that a motion?
That was my motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. McDowell.
And I'm glad to hear us do that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And just in the comment period, as far as high schools and we have great high schools across Richland One, this is a unique situation and I think it's so important that we continue to remind ourselves of this. Even many of our great high schools don't exist and sandwiched right between historic neighborhoods on major commercial corridors. I mean, this is a unique situation and it's taken some time, I think, to address our passions and make sure that we work through something that has a specificity that meets all of our long-term goals, which is, of course, to make sure we can enjoy the use of our homes, public and quiet enjoyment of our homes, but also to make sure that our young people have an opportunity to live up to their full potential and I'm excited that we're able finally to get here. I usually don't mention, name-check critics and I won't do that today, Chris Traynor, not you, but the other people that you guys work in at your paper, who have lots of opinions with no ideas. Tell them I said that. Tell them I said that, okay? I won't name-check them so don't tag them on Twitter when you tweet about this. But some of these things will take time. I'm excited that everyone's on a court right now. Let's rock and roll. Let's get this done for our children and thank all of you. Chair, you, Mr. Superintendent Raymond, I know how you do what you do, but you managed to do it and just all the wonderful collection of professionals and parents for all you do. Young people, this vote is for you. Move the previous question. Court, call roll.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. And if she could vote, Ms. Duval will be voting aye too, but there's apparently a conflict of interest law that does not have a pillow talk exception, so unanimous vote. Happy to get this done. Let's rock and roll. Young people, we do not expect you to stay for the rest of the evening. Go get homework done and we would not be offended actually if you guys left and went home too. All right? All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. All right. Let's do it.
Council, we will move into a period of presentations, the first being the National Wear Your Pearls Day proclamation, the Honorable Stephen K. Benjamin.
Yeah. And I will be brief. This is important. Obviously, many people have never heard of National Wear Your Pearls Day, but it recognizes just the incredible, important issues that we're dealing with as we work on issues of depression. I'm going to read this briefly. "Whereas Columbia of the nation has resolved to proclaim December 15, 2018 to be National Wear Your Pearls Day. And whereas National Wear Your Pearls Day was created so that when life throws dirt your way, pull on your pearls as a reminder that you have value regardless of your current circumstances, and whereas it's fitting and proper to recognize this day officially to encourage advocacy and compassion in the community and its citizens, and whereas it's appropriate to help and honor those individuals and families who are impacted by depression and anxiety in order to build a stronger community and benefit those in it. And whereas over 12% of youth ages 12 to 17 reports suffering from at least one major depressive episode in the past year, and whereas approximately 1 in 5 adults in the United States, almost 44 million people experience mental illness in a given year, and whereas 1 in 25 adults, nearly 10 million people, experiences a serious mental illness in a given year that substantially interferes with or limits one or more major life activities. And whereas the City of Columbia recognizes the importance of bringing attention to matters pertaining to mental health and raising awareness for the resources that available to residents, now therefore I, Stephen Benjamin, Mayor of the great City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim December 15, 2018 to be National Wear Your Pearls Day in our city and urge our fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance."
All right. All right. Thank you. Please.
(applause)
If I might, just a moment of personal privilege.
You might.
Thank you. If I may. So every so often, I have the honor of acknowledging some of our best employees and I think we all have grown to rely upon him. I'd ask Jeff Palin to come board. Doesn't know I'm doing this, so he's going to get me.
And look at his face like.
I'm sure his face is.
He's running.
But I tell him often that he has mastered the art of finance. What I mean by that, he is one of the best finance professionals that I know.
He's learned to say no is what you meant to say.
Well, he thinks he's Mr. No, but anyway, then he'll say he's Mr. K-N-O-W and not Mr. N-O. But we know that our city manager and our chief financial officer keeps us straight, but he does it in a way that we all understand where he's coming from and you don't find that all the time with finance professionals. They have the ability to explain things and be solutions-oriented. So I appreciate him for all he does every day and I want to recognize Jeff for his 10 years of service, really going on 11. Yeah, it's been that long with the City of Columbia. (applause) So he knows we both like a good place to eat, so you and Junie go have some dinner on me.
He didn't get one of those special envelopes?
Yeah. That was a little extra special, so thank you, Jeff.
In order, I'm not sure if I clarified, also, we're thankful to the neighborhood associations for their leadership in helping get through the dre issue. For, you got some J-School students in here again? When I mentioned the pillow talk exception, Ms. Duval's husband Jamie is the former chairman of the school board and current member of the school board and she's not participating in the dre discussions. You just can't mention pillow talk and not clarify it. And as it relates to what Teresa said about Jeff, we have, I believe, one of the very best staffs any city can have. We got solid professionals who balance things incredibly well against a very lean environment. We're the capital city. We host the state capital for the entire state. We host the only Carnegie Research One University, large university, and other colleges here in Columbia and Richland County. We host Fort Jackson, the army's largest training base in the world, here in this city. So we have a really odd financial situation that most of the public services that would normally be paid for with property taxes are not paid for as they might be in a city of similar size. So we really have to be very thoughtful and creative in ways in which we deliver services to the public. How you pay for those little things that we need like police service and fire service and solid waste and other public services, things that are essential to being a great city. And the work that Teresa, Jeff, our entire staff does every single year, years of budget surplus, we've had six of the last eight years. We've gotten the government finance officers award of excellence, what, five years in a row? Five years in a row? I mean, just really working through not just our pension issues, but handling our non-pension later long-term liabilities. We did an excellent job and Jeff is still Dr. No, N-O. He will tell you no quicker than anybody, you know, but he really has evolved over 10 years into Dr. K-N-O-W. He really focuses on helping us solve issues. So I didn't want, Jeff, you know how much we think about you and this, you got a solid team, Teresa. So congratulations, brother. All right.
Moving into a period of resolutions, resolution, amending resolution number R. 2018-094, adopting a policy and criteria to consider the inclusion of real property in a multi-county industrial park to apply Richland County Special Source Revenue Credit incentive to real property within the corporate limits of the City of Columbia developed with the inclusion of structured public parking within the project.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Court, call roll.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
No.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
No.
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 Mr. Duval? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bedura.
Once again, you know, I know it's a broken record, but this is, we're giving up thirty million dollars and there's just three projects coming up. I think that's probably enough to buy three, thirty cranes and put them around the city if y'all want to see some cranes up. For that being, I'm not going to support this ordinance either.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mr. Bedura.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I feel like I have to address it because I brought this forth to council. And I brought it forth because we are struggling in investment. It's the highest investment going on across the country and Columbia does not have cranes in the sky and we don't have buildings going. And that's because we're handicapped for multiple reasons. A lot of times we talk about it being a lot of non-tax paying properties, but we also are challenged with a high millage rate due to school districts and everything else that affect investment. We brought this forth so that we could encourage a way to get people to start so that people could see that this town, this city that we love is worth it. And we can debate back and forth on Bull Street, I have my own feelings here and there, but the reality is, is we have to do something different and be creative. And one of the challenges that we have is public parking as well. And so why not take that challenge of the parking and a way to create some incentive that puts the burden on them so they have to pay the full tax credit, tax in and then they get a credit to offset it for the investment of their garage that benefits the public? So I just want to be clear that we're not giving away anything, we're creating an avenue that's a standard that anybody who wants to make that investment can use as a vehicle to overcome the burden that's holding us back as a community. I just felt like I needed to clarify that.
So one hundred percent of zero is what?
Right. That's what I was.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to add, I echo Mr. Rickaman, and the thing is, we have to be creative. The thing is, we know, we recognize we have challenges. The thing is, you have to actually come up with real solutions to address those challenges. And sometimes those are thinking outside of the box, sometimes it's doing something that hadn't been done before. But the reality is, if they're not producing any income for us now, we're not giving away anything. We're actually creating an opportunity to create and build our tax base and an abatement for a few years. The revenue that we'll receive out after that time far exceeds, you know, probably what we'd be looking at. So I think these are very good projects and I think that at the end of the day, when people look back, people challenged us when we said we were going to do Mass General. And Mass started, you know, Main Street the way it's going. So you've got to be creative and you've got to look outside the box. And I think these are great ideas and thank you, Mr. Rickaman, for bringing it forward.
I think, and hopefully, young people who are watching this, either as a course requirement or maybe as a start of maybe serving in public office someday, you'll see not only creativity at play here, but also civility, that we don't always agree, but we know how to disagree agreeably. And I want to thank Mr. Bedura for his consistent concerns and criticisms he's raised here. And we, you know, sometimes you have to just agree to disagree and just keep moving.
Can I add some more comment? I mean, look, all the points that you guys brought up is correct. I mean, they should have some kind of mechanism to generate investment and development in the city. But I feel like that the cost and associated with these developments is going to offset or actually it's going to be higher than what you generate in taxes when you're talking about providing basic services to all these apartment complexes. Not only that, I mean, we talk about, you know, the millage points that affects the city as a whole when it comes to developers coming in here, but at the same time, it's on the back on every taxpayer's back that we have to educate these children that's coming in to live in these apartments at half the cost. I mean, other taxpayers have to pay for that cost to educate them, to make them, to make sure they're safe, to make sure that they have fire protection, police protection, everything else. And I feel like this is not a good balance. I'm sorry for, you know, my ideas are different than you, Mr. Mayor, and anybody else, but I feel like this is how I feel, my district should support it.
No need to apologize.
I don't want to start this, you know, I just wanted to make that statement.
No need to apologize. I feel like all you young, beautiful minds in this room want to actually tell you what we're discussing if you guys haven't been required to read the resolutions and the ordinances. Because of the fact that we have so much public property in the city that doesn't pay taxes, university, Fort Jackson, state government, all that create billions of dollars of economic impact but don't pay property taxes. And also another law, Act three-eighty-eight, that has significantly impacted the ability to even tax residences, then our businesses, our commercial taxpayers pay a disproportionately higher tax burden than they might pay in other similarly sized cities all across the country. I mean, it's significantly higher. And as a result, we've had to get to be very, get to be very creative to make sure that people who want to make significant capital investment, build things here, that they get a preferential tax structure. That's how many of the buildings that you've seen go up in the last several years, the station in Five Points, the new student housing development on Assembly Street by IHOP, I can't think of the name of it, the, is it Empire or something like that? But a number of the developments we've seen over the last few years, we passed an ordinance that allows us to reduce the amount of tax burden that folks pay in order to incentivize development actually happening. But for that, those incentives, none of that development would have happened. It wasn't happening before then, and I'd say, just as an interesting point, just the developments that we've seen happen in the student housing space over twenty years, we'll send about a hundred million dollars to Richmond School District, one that wasn't going there in the first place. So we're not taking money away from the school district. This incentive that Mr. Rickaman's brought to the table is different in that we're helping meet the high costs of providing parking to these developments. If you want to build a new taxable property, vertical property, you have to have, if you want a bank partner to help you finance it, you have to have parking to meet those needs. The formula that we've come up with requires that whoever's building that parking for their private development also builds in some parking that is publicly available. So there's a benefit to the public to do this. And if they do it, and they follow all our rules, and it's not a long list, but it's a pretty significant list of requirements, then over the course of fifteen years, up to fifteen years, they're able to recapture the cost of building those parking spaces, which can be sizable. As you're thinking about parking, you think about the tickets you get, and the parking garage spaces can range anywhere from twenty-two thousand to thirty thousand to build those spaces. We've picked a formula that allows us to reimburse spaces over that fifteen years so people can recapture the cost of building those parking garages, including the public benefit, and allows the investment, the cash flow, in a way that we can get the development in the city of Columbia. It's an interesting way to attack the challenge, the problem. It does not address our systemic issues that Mr. Rickaman mentioned with the high taxes or the millage rate that Mr. Bedura mentioned, but it's a creative way to try and help solve the problem. I hope that was all right, guys, but just trying to explain the challenge before, so.
Probably more than you wanted to know.
Every other semester I teach at the University of South Carolina, I might add to a class on trying to build a great city, and my students, they like me sometimes, so we'll see. Move the previous question, Court Colorado. We're still on the...
We're still on seventeen.
On seventeen.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
No.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of other matters, item eighteen, council is asked to approve the installation of one additional street light on South Wakema Street, one additional street light on Cromer Avenue, and one additional street light on the Bull Street property as requested by the Traffic Engineering Division.
Second, any discussion? Move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you all have two appointments, two entities to make appointments to, the first being the Greater Columbia Community Relations Council, the second, one individual to the Columbia Housing Authority. I'm sorry, I didn't realize Ashley was here to help lead you all through these. My apologies, Mr. James.
CRC?
No, I got one.
We're going to hold the Housing Authority.
You're going to hold the eighteenth? I forgot the application. I have a candidate from District Four to bring forth.
Okay.
You're holding that then, CHA, you're holding...
The eighteenth.
We're going to hold, we're going to hold the Housing Authority. Who do we have applying for Community Relations? I mean, Yoko holding the Housing Authority? Okay.
Quite a few people, actually. There's probably about eight people, eight or nine people that have applied, however, two of them don't live or work within the city limits, so that kind of just qualifies.
No, no, that's, is that one of our conditions?
One of them, I think it says they have to, must reside within the city limits for...
Is the residential requirement for CRC?
It's a requirement, but that, you know, you all have flexibility.
That makes no sense. Who we have, who they, just my name?
Brent Brazil, you have Leslie Gatsen, Bree Logue, Pamela K. Brown, Michelle Thompson, Gerpreet Kowchada, Blake Weiss, and Robert March.
Does CRC recommend anybody?
Mr. Mayor, can we defer that to our next meeting?
We'll hold items nineteen and twenty. Are there any matters? Thank you, Ashley. And Ashley's, I asked her for some help in kind of pulling together a report on a number. We have so many different boards and commissions that we're going to try to make sure we not only get through, but get them fully, get them fully staffed. I think she's going to be spending a whole lot of time with Erica that's kind of going through. I think there's some people who we know are serving, have served multiple terms, and just kind of cleaning that up a little bit. But she, I appreciate that you left me today. I think everyone else will probably enjoy seeing that too, just kind of knowing what we're looking at. So we'll spend some time and we'll address both of those boards. And any of the others coming up next meeting?
There's quite a few of them, they were on that list, so we can determine which ones. I've kind of noted which ones are priority as far as like their needs with being filled.
Have they all been published? Who are they?
No, they have not. That was one thing I was going to talk with you about. There's a couple of them that we held, like the DDRC as well, so I just wanted to see what the needs of, what council wanted to do.
Well, I'm feeling like Shanique is the happiest person in the room right now.
She probably is.
Not to have to do this.
Her and I have talked as well.
So we'll meet tomorrow morning and we'll move forward then, but we'll hold those two till the eighteenth.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any items from work session that need to be addressed?
No, sir.
All right. Any committee reports or referrals?
Yes, sir. I do have a referral, I'd like to refer to the Environment Infrastructure Committee, a presentation by our Sustainability Director, Mary Baldoff, on the current CPAC action plan and maybe seeing what we need to be doing to be aggressively addressing climate protection issues within the city.
I'd like to be there too, on the sidelines, on the sidelines. Who's your committee?
Me, Daniel, and you.
Just the two of us?
Just me and Daniel.
I mean, that means you two and Mr. Bedura?
Actually, I guess Mo's on it.
Oh, okay.
All right, that's, yeah, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Any other referrals or report, committee reports?
I have this direction already, Mr. Vine, and I think Mr. Rickaman, was it Ian I also, that there was a presentation, I think you all already referred it out of your committee.
Right, our committee already did it, so I can officially refer it out. We have a presentation by, I don't know the name.
It's Allied Energy.
Yes, Allied Energy. Yeah, we've met with them twice in the committee and the committee's heard their proposal, the staff has met with them and we're ready for council to hear our presentation and take some action.
All right, is there, is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
On that issue or something else? Okay, we're done.
I do have one more.
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, I understand. And to me, Teresa, I'm not sure if it's, it probably wouldn't be to me, it's committee, maybe Sam's. I want to have a discussion around opportunity zones. And Ryan and his team have been doing a good job kind of pulling together our city prospectus, and we just need to have a kind of more of a deep dive for council and the possibilities there. Really good presentation at the Economic Outlook Conference today, but we spent a lot of time in that space trying to figure out how we're going to attract capital to the twelve census tracts across the Midlands. And I'm not sure if that's, who's economic development, is that you? That's probably where it needs to be. Let's start there. A referral, is it?
No, economic is. Daniel, Howard and I, Daniel's the chair.
All right, so we met this morning. Okay, so what do you chair now?
Public safety.
Public safety. You in charge of the police now?
You're the chair.
Mr. Davis is the Economic Development Committee.
I became the chair of the economic development.
That's the other subcommittee.
Okay.
Avoid, avoid too many committees, y'all. Refer to Mr. Davis's committee on the standing committee, standing subcommittee on a full opportunity zones presentation and discussion before the end of the year. We are, we will be submitting comments from the Council of Mayors and some other groups to the outstanding treasury regulations and, but it'd be worth us just having a robust discussion as a public body.
Let me say this, actually, let's carve out just a chunk, if it's ten minutes or fifteen minutes, of a presentation by Ryan or whoever on our council meeting agenda. Everyone in council needs to hear this, not just the committee, okay? On the last, yeah, no, work session would be perfect, yes. Yeah, so we're all hearing it, not just the committee. So that doesn't require, that doesn't require a motion. Believe me, once it gets, once it gets going, you're going to want to talk more than ten minutes. You'll take up ten minutes.
Well, because I already know it'll take thirty, so if you say ten, and if you say thirty, we'll be at an hour.
But if done, if done right, this could be the, probably one of the most single, single most significant opportunities we have in this country over the next decade or two. All right, no other reports or referrals? We have appearance of the public, we have Minister Alan Browning and Mr. Reg Solis, and then Ms. Alana Jackson can speak in that order with the, with the, with the same time limits, Minister, at the same time limits we had the last two meetings. Same time limits, same time limits.
Okay, okay, okay. I come on a lighter note, guys. And I want to say this clearly, I'm Alan Browning from Hearts for the Homeless and Homeless Veterans Charity. And in the past, I mention my church because my church reached into my ministry to expand the charity, but I am a charitable organization. And I come to ask you guys again for help. Mayor, you told me that me and you would have a meeting, we had one short meeting, but I'm asking for some dates. I also want to ask, who is, like, which one of you council members or council person or represent the area of Rosewood? I want to know that also. Okay. And I want to ask you if I can get a meeting with you also, if I can get ten minutes with you also, when you, at your convenience?
No problem. Sir? No problem.
Okay. And how would I go about doing that? Because a lot of times when I call, I understand what you guys do, and I know y'all do a lot, I'm not discrediting y'all in any way, and amen, if somebody can give me that. And I want, I brought, I came here to bring y'all a message from a nine-year-old girl, my granddaughter. She told me, she knows what I do, I'm very open with her about everything that we're doing for the homeless people. And she told me to ask you guys if y'all would read Jane, how did it go, baby? Jane built a house? The house that Jane built. If y'all guys would Google that and read that for her, the house that Jane built, is very similar to what I want to do for the city, to change the face of the city with the homeless people. And she pointed that out to me and tried to brief me when I got here, before I got here on that. And I'm asking you guys to read that, and I want to leave y'all with a scripture. I just came on a lighter note, I have a meeting with MOC Friday, I'm going to let y'all know that I'm doing my homework, and I'm still coming at you guys, and I'm going to ask you guys for something to be pulled into what I'm doing in the city. I've done my research with, what's it, Transition Shelter, they have a day shelter, but it's not what the vision God gave me. And if you do the demographics, it's not very many people that's going from homelessness to another level in life. Those guys are just kind of stagnant, and most organizations you guys are funding are keeping those people stagnant so that they can keep receiving y'all money. So, you know, all the man, I just came to make y'all aware of that, and I just wanted to be documented on the city's minutes, that's why I keep coming. I want documentation of what I'm doing, and I'm very persistent because I'm military, and I'm keep, and I'm keep coming, you know? Maybe not all the time, but y'all going to see my face constantly because I'm a champion, this is who we are, Hearts for the Homeless and Homeless Veterans. And again, seventy percent of the people in America are veterans that's homeless, and it shouldn't be that way. We can't control everything.
And you keep mentioning that statistic, it is not correct, Minister.
It's sixty-seven.
Seventy percent of homeless people are...
Sixty-seven percent. I did the demographics.
It's, that's not true.
Well, it's on Google.
But it's not true. So seventy percent of the people who are homeless are not veterans.
Okay, so, sir...
And we can chat a little more about that.
Okay, we will.
But since you want to keep talking about it, we're going to keep talking back and forth.
It's on Google. I ain't come, I ain't come to debate, I just came to make y'all aware.
All right.
One veteran should be homeless.
But we appreciate your passion. We're going to spend some more time, give you information about the no, we're going to make sure you stay involved in that process. I will respectfully disagree with you on the, on the work that the various homeless service providers are doing here in the Midlands, they're working hard. Now, what you will see is that, yes, we actually have challenges in America about economic mobility, period. Not just, not just those who are homeless, but people who are able, regrettably, in this country, and it's a major challenge we're all trying to attack, is that usually where you're born makes a big difference about where you end up in life, and that's a problem that we have to try and attack.
Right.
But, but we're going to do it in the spirit of working together, not finger pointing.
I respectfully disagree with you because I know, and I'm going to be frank, because I'm kind of straight up, coming from your position, I expected that to be said because you're a city official.
It's not...
You're a city official. But I'm, I'm, I was homeless four and a half years, I know, from experience.
Yeah, just don't rely, don't rely on Google for your stats.
Okay, okay.
We're talking more about that.
We'll forget the stats on the demographics on the Google, but as far as all these millions of dollars in this city that's being given by you and private donors and all these people, and it's still, and the homeless, the number's growing, why would it grow? Why would it decrease at some point?
Well, I mean, we need, we need to have a time to have a conversation.
I notice it's not the forum for that, I understand that.
But to be frank, you got, you have, you have a group of homeless people who don't want help either.
Of course, but we're going to help the ones that do.
And, and there's a lot of folks who won't abide by rules and other things, so I think And, and there's a lot of folks who won't abide by rules and other things, so I think it's fair that when you lay something, an argument out or a debate, I get your passion and I applaud your passion.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, when, when you come, I think the best thing you could do is put something together, a formal proposal.
I will.
And let us look at what we can and what we can't do.
I will.
And I think that would be the best way to move forward.
And I would like to thank you for enlightening me on MOC. I have a meeting with them seven.
And I hope it works out for you.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm still gonna come at you guys with something.
Well, I figured you would.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
I agree with my colleagues, but, and I also disagree with you about the organizations that are in place that are just keeping people stagnant. Another organization I would suggest that you confer with would be Housing First.
Right.
They, they move people.
Is Housing First affiliated with Columbia City Housing?
No.
It's not Housing First? I'll look into that, guys, I think.
And it elevates, it worked with them to the point where they are, one, in their own apartments, they do work, and they take advantage of services available to them.
Yes, sir.
And then they, you know, go on to a state, a state of independence, that, which is the ultimate goal.
I'm, I'm, I'm listening to you guys, I'm listening to everything y'all say, I'm a sponge.
Yeah, Housing First and Mercy would be worth looking at. Obviously, the Oliver Gossem Commission's been serving this community for over 100 years. So a number of folks are doing good work. So I think, I think, so when you make a sweeping comment that folks are, are getting funding and working to keep people down.
Right. I'm not saying that they do it purposely.
That's, that's the alpha, that's the alpha in you coming out.
Well, okay, well, it needs to be expressed because guys like this that work their way out of homelessness and experiences, you gotta talk to the people that's going through and that deals with these people every day, not where they bring to your table saying, oh, I've done this, I've done that. You gotta actually go out and talk to the people like I do, to get their true story of why some people, some people just need counseling, you know, and to get them to another level. And I understand, I understand, on the surface, I have a House of Representatives, we call him Mr. Bubba, that been feeding people in that park for 17 years. He was in the House of Representatives for over 20 years.
We're very familiar with Bubba.
And he came, and he came down and spoke with me, and this is what he said, this is his words, I'm gonna quote, "On the surface, everybody seems to want to help, but the underbelly is, is just politics." He told me that. And he, he's gone partner with me and trying to help me. This is a House of Representatives that came down and handed out things Monday night when I was, was doing our ministerial feeding, and he's a great guy.
Bubba's a, Bubba's a great guy. He, he, Bubba stopped serving about 20 years ago. He's a great guy, he does great work for the homeless.
Right.
But again, there are a lot of services going on out there, and we, and, and we've encouraged you to interface with MOC, and, and, and let's, let's figure out.
I will, I will.
All right, you keep saying that, every two weeks you come back and we're doing the same answer again.
And I'll call you, sir. I'm just, it's just who I am, I was trained by the US military to be like this. Please forgive me for not being.
Let's just take that conversation whenever you call me, all right?
Y'all, y'all, please forgive me for being like, that's how my opposition is at arc, and I apologize if I.
Not arguing, it's called debating.
It's debating.
Right, right. Well, you know, however you take it, I apologize, and I'm gonna leave y'all with this, my granddaughter asked that y'all do that, I'm gonna.
Was this the same baby, the same baby who came last, last meeting with you? Your same granddaughter who came in the last meeting?
No, that was my grandson, he's here, I just dropped her off.
Last, last, last meeting.
She said would be bored and she's not coming, so she sent the message.
When he came last meeting, she came.
When they came last week.
She came to the last meeting with you, and she's, she's precious.
Okay, and I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna leave y'all with this scripture. The Bible says in Proverbs, "For those that lendth unto the poor, lendth unto the Lord, and evil repaid." I want to leave y'all with that scripture, man. Ponder on it, please do what my granddaughter asks y'all, and y'all will see me again.
Minister, I guess my only admonition, and usually, usually I always let people speak, and I won't, I won't engage, I won't engage because it starts a much longer conversation.
You know me.
You're passionate, and we love that passion. And there's so much work that you're already doing, and it can be, it can grow exponentially placed with the right organizations that are doing work here in the city. But it's important that as we engage, and we do it, we do it civilly, that we don't say, this group is not doing this, this group's not doing, and this group is intentionally keeping people down.
Mayor, mayor.
But I'm not saying, I'm saying, so just, in the same, in the same spirit, we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't quote the Good Book selectively, you know, so, so let's, let's make sure we speak in the spirit of bringing people together and, and, and not, and not this, that's it.
But you got me, I'm gonna leave you with this, we gotta call the spade a spade, I've experienced that, and I know that it's your job to clean that up, because y'all guys fool a lot of money.
Actually, it's our job to clean it up.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe, maybe, yes, sir, maybe you guys should get somebody that you hired at City Page to go look at those people's books. I understand that they federally 501(c)(3), but they operate in your city, so you have a right to go look and make sure that those funds are being utilized, and, you know, and have somebody observe, maybe.
We actually do it every year, my friend.
Okay, hire me, you know, I go for it.
I figured that was a follow-up.
Amen.
God bless you, brother. Mr. Solis.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Solis and then Ms. Jackson, we gonna, we gonna wrap it up, and I apologize every question. Thank you, Minister. Mr. Solis, you got three minutes. And we gonna, we gonna rock and roll.
Okay, just as a precursor to my, what I'm gonna say tonight, I was homeless. I've been and just recently got into a trailer with five other people, extremely small trailer, but I'm not completely homeless, I'm just not housed.
Keep talking, Mr. Solis, keep talking.
And one of the reasons, or a few of the reasons that I am homeless, is I've been filing for disability for the last four years, and I keep on getting denied. I cannot find employment, therefore eventually I just had no funds to keep a place. At the same time, I can't get assistance because I'm a single male with no dependents, I'm not an alcoholic, I'm not a drug abuser, I don't have any serious mental health problems, so therefore I am the last, I'm on the bottom of the totem pole to get any kind of assistance. And that was what put me in this situation to begin with. As I mentioned before, I have my own group, Needful Things, and I brought copies of the informational paper that I pass out to the homeless. I brought copies for each of the members.
Thank you.
That, and that's just a glimpse aside from what I have on my Facebook page as Water Resources for the Homeless. And I wanted to thank everybody for putting up with me for the last three meetings, and.
Uh-uh, Mr. Browning, you can't leave, you gotta wait, you gotta wait till the end like the rest of us. Where you going? Uh-uh. You don't, you don't hold a meeting up and then roll out when you ready to go? It, it, it doesn't work that way.
Hey, that's called the Todd Rutherford.
Now, if you get, now, if you get, if you get the baby to bed for school, that's a whole different story. All right, take the baby, take the baby to bed, your wife could probably do that while you sit here like the rest of us, but, but, yeah, I'm messing with you, bro. We'll see you later. We'll see, we'll see, we'll see you next time. God bless you.
I'm gonna make sure he gets to the MOC meeting.
Please make sure of it.
I'm a member of the MOC.
Please make, I know you are, thought we closed that loop two meetings ago.
From what I understand, in my communication with United Way, they've contacted your office, and we do have the proclamation coming for a homeless person Memorial Day.
Yes, sir.
Which has.
We do, is that on the 18th, we're gonna do that, on the 18th?
17.
Yes, we're getting that done, thank you, thank you for.
17, I've got.
Mr. Solis, did you give the clerk, so that they can remind us, so those of us who can fit it in our schedule, we'd like to be there.
So we're doing it on the 17th, and, or 18th?
It was the 18th meeting, I thought.
Yeah, but I think there's a recognition before that, so, in any event, just make sure everybody's looped in. Teresa, Lauren, Erica, just make sure everyone's looped in, but we're getting it done.
Although, from what I understand, your office contacted Mr. Browning about the proclamation when they should have been contacting me.
Make sure we have your, the right number and, and your Facebook page, we'll make sure you know.
So I'm appreciative of that, and we already have plans going. But I'm going to continue to come back about the issue of people sleeping in public and being harassed for it, as well as the.
Personal property issue.
Personal property being thrown when, in reality, what we're doing is throwing away people's memories.
Yes, sir.
Also, last time, and you don't need to give me a public answer, but I did issue a challenge to you last time.
I appreciate you sending me the articles about my, my friend, the new Congressman Ben McAdams, and we'll talk more about that some other time.
Well, if you do choose or find a representative for your office to do that, despite my health and despite any weather, I am willing to go with them to show them what they need to see, because what the public knows about some of the organizations that are being, trying to help the homeless are not what is actually happening.
Yeah, and there's, and there's some validity to, always to the issues you raise and the ones that Minister Browning raises, too, and I know Ms. Jackson's gonna raise the issue as well. We have a lot of folks that are consistent with what Mr. Rickman said, too. You know, we have a rapidly changing homeless population as well.
Right.
Not, not, yeah.
And lately, we have a large influx of youth.
Yeah, young, young, young people, every demographic, the homeless population, unsheltered population is as heterogeneous as the, as the rest of the community. A significant number of people dealing with trauma, different types of trauma, different points in their lives, and, I mean, it's a complex issue that we're gonna have to spend some time working through. We'll get the proclamation done, let's make sure that, that we're present and accounted for, and we'll talk about your other challenge sometime privately, okay?
Okay, well, like I said, if, if somebody chooses to do that, I'd be willing to show them, because I'm appalled at some of the reports I see as far as people saying what they're doing, which is not true. There are two separate entities that both report that they're feeding so many people a month.
Or not.
And in actuality, one organization is feeding at the other organization, and, but they're both reporting that they're each separately feeding as many, so many people.
Well, if there's any fraud, waste, and abuse of someone you think is doing, saying they're doing something, they're not doing, and they're getting paid for it, we definitely want to know about that, so let us know.
Right.
All right.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Solis.
Like I said, I'll be back next year, and, oh.
Not next year, in a few weeks, yeah.
Can you make sure, I brought you my Christmas card. It's not, it's not much, and it's just on plain paper, but.
Appreciate you, man.
Hopefully it gives you a little.
Can we make sure that we have Mr. Solis's phone number, so when we get the proclamation done, we touch him and not Mr. Browning, Minister Browning? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Solis. Ms. Jackson?
Mayor, City Council, how y'all doing? I want to speak firmly, because I want you, everybody here to understand what I am saying. My name is Alana Jackson, I'm not gonna let nothing I go through determine my future, because I'm gonna be what I'm gonna be anyway, and that's to have something. On last weekend, I had NAACP person came here from Atlanta, Georgia. See, I know I'm gonna have to make some noise. You see, I've called, and I've called, and I've called, and nobody never gave me an answer. I do have a job, and I'm still homeless, but nobody would answer the phone, nobody never called me back. Had him come through here, like, he was homeless. He walked down Main Street, this is my heritage, I'm glad for everybody that's got any businesses, and I wanted to succeed, but you were not treating me like I got the plague. I would not end up walking the street for you to stand on sidewalk. You see, I, my family went to Booker T. Washington, I grew up right down in here, and it doesn't really matter, because everything changes, people change, things change, it has to be a change for it to be better for us, and I do understand. But what the homeless situation, I've asked, I've called, I've asked, I've called, and I've asked, I've called, I can never get a phone call, so it makes me feel like it's not even worthy of me to even get a phone call back, first of all. Even homeless going in the bathroom dragging a rag every day, as a 52-year-old woman, I worked every day of my life, never exited City Columbia for anything, you know, and it saddens me that I'm, I'm still continuing to call, I'm still, I mean, just, just make a conscious effort to help me help myself. Because see, everybody that want to be helped, if somebody's helping, they gonna take their help and do what they got to do. But as I was saying, I had the guy from Atlanta, Georgia come down here dressed like a homeless person, they will not move out the streets on Main Street, of course. And it doesn't really matter, but I'm somebody, just as well as you are somebody, I want everything you have to succeed, and it's not gonna succeed if the people that needs help is not getting help, you know what I'm saying? Homeless, life come at you fast. Circumstances, it's just what they are. Everybody's homeless, don't want to be homeless, but you can't get a break, you can't get a plug on Main Street, plug your phone up, well, interview, because they turn them all off. You got bios, sickers, we've been paid, it's all this, this stuff, it's neither here nor there with me. I'm talking about me as individual, as a person, because I want help, I want to work, but again, I got to raise money, I can't even get no, no call back from my strong marriage, I mean, I don't know if you're getting the messages, if you're not getting the message, and that's fine, and I'm not gonna blame you for anything that I'm going through, but I will ask the City of Columbia to help me. You see, I will make, I'm gonna have to make noise, if I got to go to Supreme Court, if I got to go to Washington, I want to know what is in this town that we can't get no help from. All the other stuff is irrelevant to me. All these other organizations, I've been to transitions, I've always made my way. I lost my husband, I lost my husband, I will not lose my dignity as a person. This has got to change. Now, if the homeless people in that park, as soon as y'all tear it down and make everything else what it needs to be, it's gonna be what it is. But, okay, so, the people threw away my clothes like I was a dog, you put your foot on me like I'm an animal, do not touch me. I'm homeless because life situations come at you fast. Everybody here giggling about what people feeling, this is people difference, you don't know what people mind frame is at. People kidding about, well, is this a statistic, just dead? Will not let nobody kill me. Well, about nothing, but I need some help, I need some right now help, I said it before, and I say it again, and I can't make nobody do that, because it's a whole bunch of stuff going on in this town that you have to deal with. And I apologize for being who you are, but don't you forget about little of me, because I'm somebody too.
Amen.
And I need it, not tomorrow. All this snickering and giggling and laughing and stuff, it's not, that's preposterous for somebody that need you all to help them. If I'm here all this time, I don't want to be homeless, I've lost everything else, what else you want me to lose in my life? You want somebody to run up Main Street because they can't get down the sidewalk and open up like they're doing in California with machine gun and stuff, that's not how it is.
Ms. Jackson, if I, if I, if I ask you one question about, about what you needed most right now, because.
Because I've already explained to you what I need.
And I, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson? When we first spoke, we talked about, about, we talked about Toby's place, as, as, as a potential place to, to, to stay.
Yeah.
New Women and Children's Shelter opened by the Oliver Gossem Commission, specifically for women and children, you didn't want to go there.
Yeah, because it's locked down like Fort Knox. If I got to get up and get up at 6:00 in the morning, it's cold, it's cold.
But, but it's shelter, it's food, it's security, you just, just don't, just don't want to go there?
Just someplace for me to get out of the city, yeah? Help me help myself, that's all I ask for. Give me a phone call back, see what you're doing for me.
How, how, other, other.
Last time I was here.
Other than, other than a partnership, a faith-based partnership that, that provides exactly what you need right now, how's that not helping, Ms. Jackson?
That's.
Tell me what you need, tell me what you need, dear.
I mean, why you gonna have grown?
Tell me what you need.
I'm telling you what I need, I need some help, helping me, you understand what I'm saying? It's got a whole bunch of tax evasion houses. Last time I was here, Chief Harbrook, I came here because I don't trust the City of Columbia Police Department, and that's why I came here first time.
In the, in the, in the room.
I'm telling you.
Yeah, please, okay, please, yes, ma'am.
Or it's just not important enough to you for you to.
No, I'm listening, go ahead, sister, go ahead.
I have asked, I said I needed some right now help, this young lady sitting right here, she said, we might be able to have some right now help. He came outside when I said I don't trust the City of Columbia Police Department, and told me I can come there the next morning, go to the basement and take a shower, and he gonna take me to my, to take my interview.
Got a weird, got a weird take a shit?